A call to the meeting of the Patent Township Board of Supervisors, September 22, 2021, to order. First item on the agenda will be the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you're able, please stand and sign the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with the beautiful, delivered to the people and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item additions to posted agenda Supervisor Abrams has requested in addition to the posted agenda, we'll take that up under public safety. Anyone else? Any supervisor wish to add something to the published agenda?
Yes.
If not, let's move on.
Hello?
Yes?
Yes.
Oh, I'm going to get you next Pam because we're going to go to public comments.
Okay.
And Supervisor Rob has a something she wishes to say. Go ahead Pam.
Thank you. I would like to take a moment in remembering a very fine and remarkable man and veteran in Mr. Thomas Allen Payne who passed away on September the 11th. Mr. Payne was a teacher mentor. He was a fine individual to his family. The Patent Township would like to extend their condolences. He was also an elder in our community. For all of us, we would truly miss this remarkable man. And thank you for giving me the time to pass this on.
Thank you Pam. I knew Mr. Payne as well in my work at Penn State and I echo your comments. He was a great man, really enjoyed my knowing him. Are there public comments? If you wish to come to the podium, identify yourself and where you live, please.
Valerie Burnett, and I just wanted to finish out comments from the previous meeting. And I wanted to acknowledge and thank the fantastic board and all the wonderful people working so hard to improve our community. That includes providing more opportunities for active transportation. Over the past four years, there have been many improvements for people who walk, bicycle, run, and roll. The sidewalk on Waddle Road, bicycle lanes on Waddle Road, improvements on Orchard Road to Billmarsh. Another section of a sidewalk was added to Toftrees Avenue, several attempts to resolve issues on Cricklewood, the much needed and greatly appreciated flashing beacon lights at the intersection of Toftrees President's and Bow Manor, as well as the newly completed Valley Vista multi-use path. Much has been done. It has been noticed and greatly appreciated. At the same time, over the course of four years, I have observed that the Bellefonte Central Rail Trail appears to be more heavily used at various times than any of these other facilities that I've mentioned. That's why I started counting people, simply to convey that it is heavily used and worthy of upgrading and maintaining sooner rather than later. It has already been four years since I noticed this and 13 years since the feasibility study was done. I know the rail trail, as well as the need to complete sidewalks, bike lanes, and/or a multi-use path on Toftrees Avenue is on your radar. And I appreciate you taking these five-minute time slots over the course of four years to listen to what I've learned through counting people and through conversations with hundreds of people. At the previous meeting, I was very pleased to hear Supervisor Pam and Planner Trish share that future transportation plans will include active transportation, not just bicycles. As Supervisor Elliott had correctly stated at the previous meeting, people don't use just one method of transportation. What I've heard from numerous people is the sense of frustration and urgency to get more personal vehicles off of the roads by enabling and encouraging more people to walk, bicycle, roll, and to take mass transit, including rail. Capturing this sense of urgency from the many people that I spoke with begs the question, what will it take to complete the Bellefonte Central Rail Trail? And that said, I was also surprised to hear the much bigger question being asked that can be summarized as, how can we get more people out of personal vehicles and into active transportation and mass transit? If not with the American Rescue Plan funds, then we do have other avenues. And we also have an infrastructure bill and a reconciliation package that is waiting in Congress. And it would be lovely if our township supervisors could work together to send a message to our members of Congress, get those passed. We need funds for things like this. People really do care about climate change. They're frustrated and they are ready for action. We just need to help make it easier for them to do the right thing. So thank you so much for your consideration and attention to these crucial questions. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you Valerie.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Sure, go ahead.
Valerie, I was just curious what you meant by the supervisors working together to better make that happen. Were you suggesting that we make a public statement in support of this legislation? And I'm assuming that's possible, right Doug?
My feeling is, is that if we can have the township supervisors come together and make a public statement to the university president regarding COVID and vaccinations, that it would seem that we would also be able to send a message upward to our members of Congress.
I wasn't certain if you meant to send a message literally or metaphorically with all our heart action. Okay, both.
My feeling is that as individuals, we're not necessarily being heard. But as a township board, if there is agreement and consensus to tell our members of Congress to get this done, then sooner these funds are going to be unleashed. And I would also like to point out, part of the package, the infrastructure bill originally had funding to fully staff the IRS. And it was, the head of the IRS had testified to Congress, the Finance Committee, that over a trillion dollars a year are not being paid. Like basically, people are stealing from the American public by not paying their taxes because they don't have the accountants, the people available, because they've shrunk the IRS so much, they don't have the people available to do these audits that would actually enable us to get those funds. So there's a lot of money out there that, you know, that was taken out of that package. And I think it was put into the reconciliation package, maybe, I'm not sure. Things are moving around all the time. But basically, yes, it would be lovely if we could come together, share from the township level to our members of Congress that this needs to get done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Abrams, you have your hand raised. Go ahead.
I think that it's reasonable for the board to send a message, but it needs to be sent immediately, really, to our congressional representatives. We have some congressional representatives in the state who are fully behind a lot of these things. And there are others who, for one reason or another, don't even acknowledge that they exist. They're going to vote against them, period. I think they should know that there are consequences for that. I think there are anyway. But I think that we need to do that quickly because I think September 27th is the deadline we're looking for trying to get this passed. And today is the 22nd, so we don't really have a lot of time. And it doesn't have to be a long letter, very involved. But I think they need to know where support is. I haven't heard anyone say that we shouldn't go for these things. And if anyone wants to join this conversation and has watched the meeting now, raise your hand and get recognized.
Okay, thank you Elliott. Supervisor Tease, go ahead.
Yes, I support what Elliott has proposed. I'm wondering as well, because this is going to be an ongoing effort to raise awareness, whether this is something that our representative to the Transportation Committee could take to them in October with the recommendation to take it to the Executive Committee in October, to take it to the General Forum at the end of October, which is, Valerie and others may know, is a gathering of the elected officials throughout the central region. I think it's too late to probably bring it before the General Forums meeting of this coming Monday. But I second what Elliott has said to get an immediate letter out. But I would also encourage that if there'd be a way to let our fellow elected officials in the General Forum join on board with a General Forum position as time goes on. Thank you.
I would say, take these as public comments and potential desires of the Board of Supervisors. So if there's a supervisor wishes to draft some kind of a proposal, we can then review it. Not today, but we'll have to see Supervisor Tease recommended approaching COG next month. So we could certainly review a potential letter in our first board meeting of October.
But what's the deadline? I would actually take it back to the person who proposed it and invite Valerie Burnett to draft such a letter and share it with the board. And we can look at that unless somebody has another suggestion.
Are you saying, doing that now? You want her to do it now?
As soon as possible. If she did a draft, then she could send it to the board.
Okay, now that would be another agenda addition if we're going to add it to our agenda today. Because this was public comments, period. This was not.
Well, we've had the public comments. We've had some discussion. I'd like to see some action. We've all, we all seem to be in agreement with it. And we need to come up with a plan to bell the cat, as it were. So what was your suggestion was that we simply have a supervisor write it?
No, if a citizen wishes to present a draft, a proposed letter, and supervisors can review it, sure, that's fine. I'm just, in terms of procedure, if we're going to take this up as something the supervisors need to review and approve, it's an addition to the agenda. And Doug helped me here, if this is not, it's not urgent, unless you want to say it's urgent.
It would be up to the board chair. But it somewhat depends what you say in the letter. If you're just encouraging our congressional members to vote for a specific bill, I don't think you're not obligating the township to anything. You could do that as a de minimis item. We need to announce that we're doing it. But beyond that, that's all, that's all the board, the chair can say, we'll add this as a de minimis item, and then the board can take action on it.
Okay. So we will, pending receipt of such a draft, you know, we will move on with the rest of the agenda. But if we get a draft before the meeting is over, we can certainly add it as a de minimis item to our agenda.
Okay. And are you okay with that? We've just volunteered you to write something?
I wasn't actually prepared to write something here tonight.
No, not tonight.
Okay, I thought that was what you were saying. Okay.
I think that was what I was also being asked. But no, that was not my intent.
All right, moving on, public comments. Any other members of the public who wish to address the board on an item that's not, that's not on the agenda? This is your time to do that. Hold on Elliott, I'm waiting to see if there are any other comments. No one else is proposing a public comment? So Elliott, go ahead.
Since there is de minimis time between now and September 27, and many people think this is a de maximus issue, maybe we should write a small letter just supporting them passing this. And or have one of, see if one of our board members, our ABC members would like to draft. It doesn't have to be elaborate, just so that we express our interest in this. And when we actually say that we're not obligating the township to anything, that may or may not be the case. If a great big bill is passed that has many new highways or new railroad or something in it, there will likely be state and local contributions asked during that process. So we would take those up when they came up.
Okay, thank you Elliott. Don't see any other members of the public raising their hands wishing to address the board on an item not on the agenda. So let's move on to the next agenda item, number three, Housing Task Force update. Supervisor Tease?
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate the time on the board. This is an appeal to the greater public in hopes that if you watch this meeting on CNET or live or read the minutes, that you will join an important community conversation that is starting this fall and continuing into the next year regarding the issue of housing in Patent Township. And as part of this, our Housing Task Force, which has been meeting since last January, worked with CNET to produce three very short, under three minutes each, public service spots inviting the public to be part of this conversation. Because we've seen in Patent Township that when citizens come together with shared values and a commitment to act, that some wonderful things can happen. This happened in the last 20 years on a different matter where we voted to increase our taxes for open space and the hot track was purchased. And while the task force recommendations are not of that financial magnitude, they are calling on the community to come together to have a new conversation about the importance of what is known as attainable housing. And we believe it's very important to the economic future of our township. So I've asked if these three short videos could be shown as part of this meeting. And want to give thanks first to Nicole Pollock, who is the co-chair of the Housing Task Force, who has coordinated this project and who is the narrator of this project. Also to the CNET Executive Director Cindy Hahn and the Operations Manager Stephanie Yeager. And to those folks that we're a part of, we are an 18-member task force and have divided into subgroups. And special thanks to those folks who took on an extra subgroup to be the video subgroup. These are your neighbors who wrote the scripts. And maybe some of you know them, Kate Damico, Stephen Rogers, Tony Buddha, Stephanie Fost, and Morgan Losikakis. So I would ask if you're patient that we show you these three videos. They will be aired on a recurring basis on CNET. They are also available on the Patent Township website, which has many more links to housing issues prior to our public presentation of our recommendations that will come to the board on Wednesday, October 27. And a reminder again, this is the start of a conversation. It is not the end. We see our recommendations as being the initial part for our community to take a fresh look at how we can have housing and other matters that serve all of our residents, that serve our essential workers, many of whom cannot afford to live here, that serve our seniors who want to stay here in the community they've built and they can't afford to do so. Our young professionals raising their families, many single parents with children who cannot afford to live here. And we believe, while it's not a unique problem to Patent Township, there are things that we can do. So I guess Larry, if you'd be the one to show the first video, this is looking at our invitation to the public and what we hope the conversations will spur.
Master volume is on.
Oh, this one. Crisis that confronts communities nationwide. Meeting the challenge in Patton Township requires that we seize this moment, work together to make.
We're going to restart it here.
Patton Township is talking housing. The pandemic has deepened a housing crisis that confronts communities nationwide. Meeting the challenge in Patton Township requires that we seize this moment, work together to make Patton Township a place for all. A vibrant community where we live, work, and play together. A community where businesses can thrive and employees can find housing that is affordable for them. A welcoming community for all families, including single parents and their children. An elder-friendly community where seniors can afford to stay in the community they helped build. It will take all of us to make Patton Township a place for all. This past year, an 18-member Housing Task Force has researched housing affordability and attainability. Now they invite you to join the discussion, starting this fall and continuing into 2022, as they bring their report and recommendations to the community. We would like to hear from you, and you can reach out in several ways, by going to a public meeting, going online, and by contacting staff. Together, let's make Patton Township a place for all. Stay tuned for our other videos on housing as Patton Township continues the conversation. Patton Township is closely examining the local housing market to assess housing attainability at various income levels. As with most things, housing types and prices are not one size fits all. Housing is a basic human need, and for many of our neighbors, affording adequate housing in the greater State College area has become increasingly difficult. In this video, we will explain what we mean by attainable housing. According to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, paying for your mortgage or rent should only require 30% of your gross monthly income. The idea behind that percentage is that that is how much a household can pay while still having money left over for other necessities like food, transportation, and healthcare. Finding housing at that price is difficult or not easily attainable. According to the National Low Income Housing Coalition, a person in the State College area would need to earn $17 an hour to afford a one-bedroom home at the fair market rent price of $885 per month. Or one would need to work 94 hours a week at minimum wage to afford a one-bedroom home in State College. Let's see what it looks like for someone trying to find rental units in the area. This image from apartments.com is a search for a two-bedroom or less for under $1,100. There are eight complexes listed. Rent for a one-bedroom ranges from $890 to $1,100 a month, meaning one would have to earn between $17 and $21 an hour to pay rent while still having money left over for other necessities. Let's revisit our search and look at for-sale homes. Looking at what is available for sale on Zillow, there are 24 homes selling for prices ranging from $83,500 to $2.2 million. A basic way to determine the price of a home you can afford is to multiply your yearly income by three. This would mean that our home buyer earning between $28,000 to $100,000 per year could only afford 8% of the homes. Finding attainable housing that is affordable and available has become an increasingly difficult task in Patton Township. We hope to reverse this trend. We would like to hear from you, and you can reach out in several ways, by going to a public meeting, going online, and by contacting staff. Together, let's make Patton Township a place for all. Stay tuned for our other videos on housing as Patton Township continues the conversation. Patton Township is closely examining the local housing market to assess housing attainability at various income levels. Investing in attainable housing demonstrates a community-wide commitment to making Patton Township a vibrant and sustainable place for all generations. Attainable housing options were a challenge prior to 2020, but since the onset of the pandemic, it has become even more apparent that now is the time to act to make Patton Township a place for all. The pandemic has taught us that adequate housing is a form of healthcare. The pandemic also highlighted the importance of building community resilience to withstand challenges and foster recovery. Inclusivity further strengthens the community's resilience and keeps it vibrant, sustainable, and attainable for generations. This means that aging residents can stay in the community they helped create. All families, including single-parent families, have support in raising the next generation, and children can live in the community where they grew up when it is time for them to find housing of their own. Pandemic aside, it's important to keep in mind that incremental housing growth is valuable for economic prosperity and stability. Providing attainable housing options near transit is crucial. Employers, and especially small business owners, are better able to gain and retain employees when getting to work is not difficult or expensive. Furthermore, essential workers should be able to live in the communities where they work. Achieving these goals will help make the Patton Township community more cohesive and resilient. According to the National Low Income Housing Coalition, one would need to earn $35,400 per year to afford a one-bedroom home in State College. Maybe you or someone you care about has struggled with attaining housing. Consider this your call to action. We'd love to hear from you. You can reach out in several ways, by going to a public meeting, going online, and by contacting staff. Together, let's make Patton Township a place for all. Stay tuned for our other videos on housing as Patton Township continues the conversation.
Is there anything else you wanted to add, Anita?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Comments from the board, comments or questions from the supervisors?
It was great. I'm very, very impressed. I know a lot of work has gone into the research that the task force has done, and a lot of professionalism in the production of the videos. Kudos.
I have to piggyback on that as well, and to Nicole, an outstanding job, and to the task force. Remarkable, remarkable hard work, and please, continue moving forward. We look forward to the next step to making this a reality. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The task force, I believe, will be giving the supervisors a report in next month, is that right? Yeah?
Yes, October 27.
Okay.
We'll be bringing our full report and our recommendations.
Great, looking forward to it. Next item, 3B, Green Hollow Pickleball Courts Review of Hours of Play. Supervisor Ties has submitted a proposal. Would you like to introduce your proposal, Anita?
Yes, thank you. I know that there are many different thoughts about the existence of the pickleball courts at Green Hollow. The survey that was conducted sought to get community response as to what hours would be preferred for this interim time before the new courts at Burnell Road Park go into operation. And as the community knows, the board has approved finding, funding six new dedicated pickleball courts at Burnell Road Park with bids to go out in January, and construction hopes to begin in the spring. It may take one to two months, depending on weather and construction availability. The survey sought the views of both pickleball players and residents concerning what hours would be appropriate during that interim time. And I've spent quite a bit of time looking at the survey results. It's been noted, this was not a full scientific random survey, that there were, I believe, 133 Patton Township residents who responded. My proposal for the winter hours seeks to be a fair rendition of what I saw in those survey results, again, recognizing that it was a limited survey. But I was struck that one out of five of the Patton Township respondents wanted no hours at all, absolutely no hours. And the other respondents identified particular times that they preferred. My proposal for the winter hours has those exact times that were the preferred number one choice of the pickleball players for four of the seven days. It doesn't have it for all seven days, but the hours of 11 to 5 on weekends and 11 to 5 on Tuesdays and Thursdays, those were the number one and number two choices by the pickleball players themselves. And you can read my full report, but the one point I would like to make, and I have, it was included in the report, but I have asked Alex if he could put it up on the screen for maybe bigger viewing. Alex, the one of the Suburban Park, yes, I, within a very short drive from Green Hollow, 1.2 miles from Green Hollow is Suburban Park. Now, I know this is not the preferred choice of pickleball players, but this is a dual-line court that is, from my visitation, it's there in the full sunshine, and I would think ice and snow might melt quicker over there. Those folk who don't have hours at Green Hollow under my proposal on the days where no hours are permitted, they have the option of going 1.2 miles to Suburban Park. They also have the option of going out to Burnell Road Park, where there are four dual-line courts. And while that's a little farther drive for some people, for some it might not be. So I, the reason I propose having several days without hours at Green Hollow in this interim time, currently there are two days without hours at Green Hollow, I propose making it three days in recognition, again, that one in five of the survey respondents wanted no hours at all. And the only restrictions, the only way that residents nearby can mitigate the noise, and I know there's a debate with the pickleball players about the amount of noise created, the only way the residents can mitigate that is by having no court hours at all. And I've read the correspondence that's come into the board. I understand the concern of some of the pickleball players, that this is somehow limiting the choice of hours for the winter. I believe the challenge with doing choices, and the reason we did the survey at all, was to try to find the sweet spot where most pickleball players wanted the hours, and to be able to offer those without having it be a seven-day-a-week event. And in addition to being able to go to Suburban Park or Green Hull, or Burnell Road in the winter, and I know this might be out of some people's range, but there are people who cannot afford the Y, and the Y is doing a wonderful job, and we certainly salute their success. But the Nittany Valley Sports Center is, as you may know, offering indoor pickleball courts where folks can go for $4 a person from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. or 11:00 to 1:00 p.m. five days a week. And that would offer another opportunity during the winter hours for, depending on where you buy your coffee, for a cup of coffee, you could go play pickleball for two hours there. So that is the rationale behind the hours that I am proposing for the winter. I think it seeks to respect both the residents, well, the residents really want no hours at all, but if they did have to have hours, it offers them three days of respite for those who are working from home still in this pandemic, and for the retired folk who are there. And it offers 32 hours of choice play for the pickleball players, which if you multiply it out, each court can accommodate, pardon me, it offers 24 hours. Hard to get all the numbers together, but it gives, I think, many hours, options of play they've got from 10:00 to 11:00 to 5:00, Saturday, Sunday, Tuesday, Thursday. And on those other days, they can go to the nearby parks, or if they are able to go to the indoor parks out at the Nittany Valley Sports Center. So that was the rationale behind my proposal.
Okay, thank you. We're collecting information right now, so Susan Wheeler, you're, I see you're on here. Is there anything you wanted to add?
No, I think that Anita presented a summary of the data as it was presented in the report that you saw at the last meeting and this meeting. So I don't think I want to add anything unless you have specific questions about the data.
Okay. Doug, has any other township staff have anything to add?
No, sir.
Okay. I will open up comments now. First of all, let's have questions from the board, and then we'll open it up for the public input. Elliot, do you have a question?
I understand the data of the Monday through Friday, but I guess I don't understand why Tuesday and Thursday are the playing dates instead of Monday and Wednesday, for example, or Monday and Friday, but, because I didn't see the data saying that one day of the week or the other was that much more important.
Anybody want to respond to that, Anita or Susan?
Well, I just personally have met pickleball players who played on Tuesday and Thursday mornings. I knew there were some folk, there's a very wonderful and lively women's group that I encountered on Thursday morning, so I was thinking they were already there, but that's a good question. One could change the date, the days around. Again, I don't know that the survey identified when people were actually playing, it was more of a, when do you wish the hours would be open? But yes, I, I hear what Supervisor Abrams is saying, and certainly that could, Monday could be swapped for a Tuesday or a whatever. But I do believe it's important to have some days when there is no play as a predictable respite for the surrounding residents.
Just to clarify, the data did show that all seven days, the preferred time was, would have been 11 through 5, so there was nothing that would have indicated that any single day would have been much different from any other, to answer your question, Elliot.
Thanks. Okay, I'm going to open this now for public comments. If you have already submitted in writing your comments to the board supervisors in the past, we read them all, we, you know, we know what you're saying and so forth. So it's really not useful to just simply reiterate something we've already read, but if you wish to speak directly about the proposal for changing the hours of play from what currently exists, we welcome those kinds of comments, and your maximum time allotment for your comments is five minutes. So as I recognize you, please identify yourself and where you live. So first, Drew Von Teesh, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, Drew Von Teesh, I live in Harris Township. Just wanted to add a few points about surveys and also statistics. Before there were reduction in hours at Green Hollow, and this, by the way, this proposal is the fourth reduction in playing hours in the park, the fourth one, we had over 90 hours of available time to play. Now we're down to 24. So that's a, over a 70% reduction in the available playing hours. That's really significant. That is not a definition of balanced, not a definition of compromise, and it's definitely not a definition of moderation. We are open to compromise, but to remove 70% of the available playing hours, and it was just mentioned, players want to play any day of the week, so why can't we find a compromise that's closer to 50%, say, and make some time available every day of the week for players? I'm not saying we go back to where we were when over 90 hours were available, but this has really restricted our ability to let people play the game that they love. And I want to add, a lot of them are locals who've walked to the park to play. I've met them when I'm I've met them when I'm there, and they want to use this park for pickleball. So I think the survey has misconstrued a little bit what the players also want, the people that want to play pickleball. There isn't a single player that will tell you it's okay to take away additional days a week. We play there every day that we can. And there's not a single player that's in favor of reducing the hours further. We just went down from 32 down to 24. My question would be, why are we doing that? That seems overly predictive to the pickleball community. It's true that we have more players that want to play. They are utilizing some of the other courts that are out there at Burnell and Suburban Park, Daleview Park, it's great, but experienced players want to play on pickleball courts, as do the people who live in the vicinity of Green Hollow. So my advice to the board and my recommendation and my wish for you is, let's make some decisions here based on what is, not what we think will happen. So we've heard all of the stories about how Green Hollow is going to fill up immediately due to all the players that want to get in there and play pickleball. That hasn't happened. If you've been by, as I have, you'll notice it has not filled up again. That's because they're playing at the Y or they're going to some of the other parks. So to take away additional hours, it's not based on anything factual. And to just arbitrarily select Saturday, Sunday, and Tuesday and Thursday and eliminate three days out of the week is completely arbitrary. I'd like to see more moderation. I'd like to see more hours than what we're getting with 24. It's simply not enough to support the community and the locals of Patton Township. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Next is Brandon. Please identify yourself and where you live.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Brandon McDonough. I live on Silverwood Lane. I shot from Green Hollow Park. Been along for the ride, down for a few months in this discussion. I just, I wanted to first thank Supervisor Tease for her thoughtful nature in approaching both the change in hours from summer to winter, recognizing that there is a shift in daylight time and potential for, you know, playing in ideal temperatures in the winter months with the sun melt, you know, snow melt or anything like that. I just wanted to kind of respond from a neighbor's point of view on limiting the days of the week. Over the past, so first off, the reduction in hours right now has greatly positively impacted the surrounding neighbors. You know, there has been a drop off in play based on the restricted hours. I'm sure that the Y does plan that as well. But on that note, right now, there's to be no play Mondays and Fridays, and there is still consistently play going on on those days. This Monday evening, I was in the park with my family for a dinner picnic because the weather was nice and we took a picnic basket down to the pavilion. And there were three courts active during our time when we were there. A total of six, they were playing singles, but there were six people on three courts playing pickleball on a Monday evening. I'm not going to be the kind of person that's going to call this in to the township police. That's a waste of my time, that's a waste of their time. But I think that why I bring this up is, there's a challenge with restricting the hours on days of the week. So, you know, I do, I do understand where Drew is coming from, but at the same time, I don't think that that argument then stands, well, it should be open every day of the week, seven days a week from 11:00 to 5:00 p.m. That's obviously not what I'm advocating for either. I mean, I could certainly come on and say, you know, I was not one of the people that did zero hours a week on the survey, but the problem is still that problem. It hasn't gone away. Just because there's less play doesn't mean that it's any less convenient when you're trying to, like Anita said, work remotely and my window backs up against the park and I'm on a call, right? So the issue of the noise is the issue of the noise regardless if it's one court or forego. Yes, one's noisier than the other, but the, as the, you know, last, on last meeting, the study of the noise didn't come up at all. And I know that Alan was kind of sitting back and wanted to bring up the frequency and pitch and decimal level of the noise that was studied. You know, that still is the main issue. But basically, I just wanted to, with my opinion, on the challenges of limiting it on the days of the week, because we're consistently seeing people still play on those days that are supposed to be zero hours. I just, I'm the one that I'm not going to pick up the phone and call someone on that. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Next, Alfonso, please identify yourself and where you live.
Hi, my name is Alfonso Renato, and I live in College Township. And I just have a question. Is the board represented by legal counsel?
We have a, we do have a solicitor, yes.
Who is the, who is that person and or law firm?
It is Attorney Betsy Dupuy with BAPSC Allen.
Thank you for your time.
Any other members of the public wish to address the board? Yes, go ahead.
Valerie Burnett, Tough Trees Avenue. And I just wanted to compliment Supervisor Anita for all of the effort in going through the survey. For a problem that is temporary, it is an extraordinary amount of effort that has been put forth to please people in the community and beyond. And I can say personally, I utilize many of the parks in the region. And one park in particular, Woody Crest, I go over there, I mean, now and again, to play basketball. But I can tell you that I am very conscious of the fact that that's in a neighborhood. And I self-select times that are not going to be disruptive to people who live there. And I just wanted to make that comment, that it's a common courtesy to think about the neighbors. And I really appreciate all the effort that the supervisors have put forth on something that is a temporary problem until the courts are completed over at Burnell Park, which is the more permanent solution. So I applaud your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. There's Rod. Rod, please identify yourself and where you live.
Yes, my name is Rod Kaya. How are you today? Can you hear me?
Yes. Where do you reside, please?
I'm in State College, actually. And I do have, actually, I pay taxes in your township. So what I would like to put on the record here is, so you are okay for wasting the tax money we actually pay, $85,000, to go ahead and close those court. You don't, you don't find there is a problem with that at all. And besides that, it's okay for you guys to raise the taxes later on on us because we are wasting taxpayers' money. After building this beautiful court for the pickleball community, you are okay to close it. I mean, it really is, the way I'm looking at it, it's absolutely the grace to this township. It really is. It's beyond belief what you are doing. I don't understand what's your data behind that. You are, it's a park supposed to be actually for people enjoyment. So you have couple people are whining about that, about the noise or whatever it is, but you have over 200 people, according to you, that said, yes, we would like to use it. But you don't actually, you disregard all those people. And we are okay, and we keep eliminating time and hour. And as you can see, your goal is to eliminate that park completely, and you are being successful. It is sad to see again, I'm going to reiterate that again. It is pretty sad for me to see, as a taxpayer, you are wasting the tax people's money building this beautiful park for the community to enjoy, and you are okay to close it and open another park. I mean, I don't understand, it's almost I feel I'm living in a third world country, to be honest with you. This should not happen in the United States. It should not. I mean, people has a voice, but you are disregarding all those people's voice. You know, it doesn't matter what we wrote you, it doesn't matter what research actually tell everybody to go ahead and be healthy and exercise more and more, but you keep eliminating hour. And it is summertime where people could come out of work about 4:00, 5:00 o'clock to go and play for two hours, and you are telling them you cannot work at that time. It's a public park, for God's sake. It is a public park. It's not a private park. If those people, the one they are complaining, if their goal is to eliminate any old kind of noise, maybe they shouldn't be there. And I actually told, I did say again, when they built the Teaberry Ridge Development, there was no blue course drive there. You know, they still, for, for the benefit of people, they build the road and the house is still there. You know, they didn't say like, oh, there is a half a million dollar house there, we're not going to open street. I gave you an example, and I stated the name is person, you could actually contact him directly. His window broke twice from the golf course. The golf course did not eliminate the hour, did not reduce the hour. They didn't tell people you cannot come over on the weekend or Saturday or Sunday or Monday. They still open and operate. When people live in those area, they are expecting that stuff. When you live close to a water, if the water level rise and you could have a flood, you expect that stuff. So people expect that stuff at the park, you know? But for one reason or the other, you are listening to couple people and you are disregarding everybody, and you feel it's okay for you to spend people's money. The one they trust you with that money. And you are okay to close that park. And this trip, I mean, completely designated is the pickleball community. I mean, if you tell people like, they don't even see each other anymore. And you are going to another site without any research, without the wind. Drew is my good friend, actually, and I think he kind of spoke, in my opinion, when he said the wind, it's not a factor there. The wind is a major factor over there. The wind is a major factor if you go beyond the other area by the air. If you're going to do it, you have to do it right. But again, why are we closing a park? You hit your target, people could come over and utilize it. Why are you closing it? Why are we wasting people's money? All right? Thank you so much for listening to me. Even I don't feel it's actually hitting any target. You still, I feel, I mean, now you are asking about why people not being involved and people are tired because like, you are not listening to their people. I mean, we don't even have a survey about tennis players, you know, and you said like, we're going to do tennis. I mean, there is a tennis court, beautiful tennis court right behind John. If you just put a camera and have that camera operate and batter for about like five days, the court is not being utilized. And they are on five mile per.
Mr. Kaya, your five minutes are up.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you so much for listening to me.
Yes, thank you for your comments. Any other members of the public wish to comment on this topic? Seeing none, let's move on to supervisors.
Yeah. I think that's all.
So let's move to, let's start in the room, Betsy Whitman.
So my one question is, and I think the rationale that Supervisor Tease went through to choose days, weekends and then two weekdays, is sound. But my one question to her and to the rest of the board is, why the reduction in hours from 32 to 24 when, and I, I know, whatever, I guess that's my question. And I know the neighbors would prefer the 24. I think we got along fine with the 32. And if we could just hold with the 32 until the courts open at Burnell, would, how do people react to that? So that's, that's my comment.
Okay. Supervisor Rod?
I think the question was to Anita on the hours from 32 to 24.
I think Dan was just going to go around.
I'm just going to go around and Anita, when it's Anita's turn, she can address that question.
Okay. I'm just, I'm in concern on finding out about the 24 hours as well. We did the survey, 11 to 5 p.m., but I would think that maybe if we gave the, 32 hours would be giving back some more time, might be an answer to some of the questions that and comments that has been presented to this board.
Okay. Elliot?
I agree that I thought that when we made our motion in the summertime, that we weren't going to close or cut back until the new courts opened. And so I think that they should be left at 32 hours. I don't know whether Mondays are better or Wednesdays. I think that maybe they should be spread around. And, but the idea that the park's being closed is total long test. The park is still open. It's just one use of the park that's going to be changed, and that can happen anytime. I understand the frustration with people who want to play. And what I actually would suggest would be that we all get behind an effort to increase the number of pickleball courts regionally in all of our townships and share the expense. And I also think that we probably get some contributions from people who wanted to play, just like softball leagues will have to pay certain amounts to use facilities at different times. The same thing happens at swimming pools. You don't go in for free. But that can all be worked out. But I think that we should do, have a regional effort, because it's obvious that there are more and more people who want to play pickleball. And so the cut has to be temporary, and I don't think we want to, I don't think we want to cut it to 24 hours right now.
Okay, thank you. Anita, go ahead.
Yes. I second what Supervisor Abrams has said about the regional need. It turns out that Patton Township is doing more in developing pickleball courts than any township in this region. We're going to be putting six new dedicated courts in Burnell Road Park, which is our Patton Township park. It is not Patton, or Burnell Road is not designated as a regional park, but it's going to be serving that purpose in pickleball. And I agree with Supervisor Abrams in hoping that other townships will look at the possibility of either supporting more regional courts or within their own township. Mr. Kaya is very articulate, and I believe he lives in Ferguson Township and would encourage him to, to go talk to the Ferguson Township supervisors and other folk. We received letters today from someone in Bollesburg and College Township and State College, and it'd be wonderful if you talked to your boards as well. The question was raised, what changed? Why cut back to 24 hours? And where I was looking at is, what is a reasonable number of hours for the 54 Patton Township pickleball players? The survey shows there are 54 Patton Township pickleball players who responded. And Green Hollow was never intended to be a regional park. It was never intended to serve the needs of the entire pickleball community. I mean, you're certainly welcome. Everybody can play in every township, but the 54 pickleball players, you know, what is a sufficient number of hours that would meet their needs? And what changed was that we had not heard and had statistics, however variable or inadequate they might be, from one fifth of the Patton Township respondents saying no hours at all. they might be, from one-fifth of the Patton Township respondents saying no hours at all. It's not that the residents around there want twenty-four hours. They want no hours at all. And not just the residents around there. If you look at the statistics, those figures came from people throughout Patton Township, which said to me, some of the folk were having compassion in supporting the local residents, just as some non-pickleball players were advocating hours for the pickleball players. I saw compassion being exhibited on both sides, which I thought was terrific. But why cut back to twenty-four? If you look at, I did research on pickleball courts in noise-sensitive areas in California. And they have, I can cite other examples, but I'm sure then we'd get in a debate about where they're located. But having twenty, twenty-four hours has been judged reasonable in other places, maybe not here. And I hear folks saying leave it now, says he is. But I think the fact that the survey showed one-fifth of the respondents in Patton Township want no hours at all would, would support a further reduction of hours. That's why I proposed it. Thank you.
We have a proposal. There's not been, it's not a motion yet, but I wonder if any other members of the board besides Anita wishes to propose a motion. Elliot?
First, I want to thank Anita for doing all this work. This is something very typical for her, doing this kind of work and, and keeping at it and making sure that it's completed. One problem with surveys is that you typically don't survey everybody. And sometimes, and there's no way to prove this happened this time, the people who are most interested in this issue, who are most concerned about it, Pro or Con, are the ones who are filling, filling out the surveys and a lot of people really don't care. But we don't have a long time before the new courts are open. And I'm just not sure why we need to cut the number of hours by eight hours when we're already, you know, when it comes at the end of this whole problem with at least Green Hollow Park next spring.
Okay. So Elliot, it sounds like you're in favor of just maintaining the current schedule.
I think so. I mean, it's not, it's, you know, if it's a balanced thing, like maybe, I think two parts that way and one part the other way. I don't think any of these things are, that are like out of the stone.
Any other supervisor? Yeah, Pam, go ahead.
Can I ask Anita a question? Can I ask Anita a question?
Sure.
Supervisor Tease, question. Would it be hardship if we added the eight hours that were taken away from the twenty-four? Would you object to the board doing the thirty-two hours?
No, I, I sense that there is a majority. If we took a vote today, it would be four to one to maintain the current hours. I think my question would be with Elliot. Would you keep those hours as they are? Right now, we have no, no hours on Monday, Friday. I would strongly urge that there be at least two weekdays without hours, but maybe you don't want it to be Monday. Maybe you don't want it to be Friday. I think it would be unfortunate to have hours every day of the week that for those residents for whom the noise is piercing, and it is, both the reason, and Mr. Kaye, you asked why we are doing this. The reason is that national standards recommend that courts now be placed within, not within five hundred feet of homes and if they are to have noise mitigation and the very topography of Green Hollow prevents that. So what's, what is the saying? To me, it's saying that the township in leadership recognizes when a mistake was made. And if that mistake is harming some of its residents, it takes every measure to correct it. And we are therefore recognizing that those courts should never have been built there so close to homes with no possibility of effective noise mitigation. And we are therefore taking strong action to put them where they are appropriate in Burnell Road Park. But sure, go to thirty-two hours, but I really would oppose having it be every day of the week. That is a constancy that I think is not being, recognizing the nature of that noise. So yeah, are there two other days of the midweek? If you don't want Monday, Friday off, what would the proposal be for respite days where, again, you have people working from home? You have retirees. So I, I would, thirty-two fine, but do you want to change the Monday, Friday off to different weekdays?
Okay, thank you.
Elliot, you want to say something else? Go ahead.
Well, in terms of which day it is, I mean, it's, it's who you talk to. The people that have talked to me want to play on Monday and Friday. The surveys show that most people seem to play on Tuesday and Thursday and, and that's how it started. So I don't know what the answer to that is, but maybe it should be four days or, or alternate and depending on which week of the month is. But you can do, you have all kinds of complicated formulas, but I think that thirty-two hours should remain and that's who you talk to really. Ten people, nobody's actually called me on the phone about this. Couple of people have written about other issues to me, but not on the pickleball issue.
Okay. We need to come to a resolution on this, so. Yes, Anita, go ahead.
So then what if the hours, we keep, we reinstate Monday and Friday, reinstate Monday, Wednesday, Friday, but not Tuesday, Thursday? We'll have the Tuesday, Thursday people coming and saying how unfair that is. Yeah. I think Fri- Friday off is nice to give a respite, or Monday off, they've had constancy for the entire weekend and that's very appropriate. It's a weekend. You know, that was the logic of Monday, Friday.
Betsy?
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on the logic of the Monday and Friday, which Anita had arrived at and she and I had, Anita mostly, but we had talked to some people who had experience with recreation schedules in public parks. What if we kept the schedule as Anita has proposed, but added the same hours for Wednesday that we have on, proposing for Tuesday and Thursday? So that would bring us up to thirty hours is my math. And then we just need two more hours or we could keep it at thirty hours, which I would be fine with. So we would essentially have playing on the courts five days a week, which is essentially what we have now.
But with the hours that Anita proposed, eleven to five?
Eleven to five.
On the, on the playing days?
On the playing days.
Which would be Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday and Sunday, correct?
And Wednesday.
Tu- Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Saturday and Sunday. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Saturday and Sunday. That's what you're proposing, eleven A M. to five P M. Board members' comments?
I would second that.
Any other board members' comments?
I've, I've heard, the only people that have actually talked to me say Monday. So Monday, how about Monday, Tuesday, Friday?
Sure. Sounds like a plan.
I'm sorry, Elliot, you're, you're suggesting the days, weekdays of what, Monday?
Monday, Tuesday and Friday. And some people would just as soon have Mondays be abolished completely, but had nothing to do with pickleball.
So you're proposing Monday, Tuesday and Friday and no play on Wednesday and Thursday? Is that what you're saying?
I guess.
Okay, so that's different from Betsy's proposal. Reaction, Pam?
I'm trying to write this down. Okay. Elliot, is Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Monday, Tuesday and Friday is he proposing for the weekdays.
And I would have to.
And Betsy was proposing Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday for the weekdays.
And I, I would propose Monday, Tuesday and Thursday.
Okay. So now Betsy's changed to Monday, Tuesday and Thursday?
Yeah, so that we could have the Friday free, which was some advice that we had gotten earlier of having that Monday, essentially the days bracketing the weekend, Monday and Friday, having those free. That was a common practice in some public parks.
Go back to Anita. What's your view, Anita? Besides, are you, have you changed from your original?
Well, I will support, you know, having it three days a week. We all like different days a week, whatever the board thinks.
Only concerned about listening to the people who's what they want. I think we have a survey.
Mr. Kaye, we have already had public comments, so we're in the process of the board making a decision here. So I haven't weighed in yet.
Please do.
Well, Elliot says he has received citizens' comments requesting that Monday be open to play. So I would suggest.
Monday, Tuesday, Friday is fine with me, or Monday, Tuesday, Thursdays.
So Monday, Tuesday and Thursday.
As was suggested just a moment ago.
So no play, no play on Wednesday or Friday? Is that what you're saying? Elliot?
Well, I think.
No play on Wednesday or Friday? Okay. That's what you're suggesting. So Betsy?
Yes.
No play on Wednesday or Friday? Pam?
That's fine.
Is that okay with you, Anita?
Yes. Yes, that's fine.
All right. And, and everyone agrees with the hours of play that Anita proposed, eleven A M. to five P M. on the playing days? And the date to, by which we will implement this would be November first? Is that, that was Anita's proposal?
Why not October first?
November first through March thirteenth?
I hear, I hear Elliot saying he'd like it to start October first.
Today's September twenty-second. Why, why wait?
So you want to implement that now? Is that what you're suggesting?
If we're doing it.
How long will it take to change signage?
Uh, signage? How long would it take to change the signage?
We can get temporary signage fairly quickly. That should be, I mean, if, October first should be fine.
October first, okay with you, Elliot? Give us time to change the signs?
And I had proposed them till daylight savings starts in the spring, but I'm hearing Elliot say maybe these should just be until the Burnell Road courts are open. Do you folks want to revisit this in February to look at springtime hours?
We can always, sure, we can always revisit this at some future time. Yes. So, okay.
Also, Center Region Parks has offered to do a Q R code at the site to, some people don't know where Burnell Road Park is. And I'm grateful to Pam Salakangas and Jim Carpenter of the Park District who are willing to put a C R code to inform people of many other options of the dual-line courts and the wonderful things that our parks offer.
All right. My sense is we have a board consensus now.
I'm going to suggest, just to make sure that there's no, absolutely no ambiguity, that somebody make a motion and we have a second full vote.
I will, I will move it, that the board adopt hours starting October first to March thirteen, twenty twenty-two, of thirty hours each week designated as eleven A M. to five P M. on Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday and Thursday with no hours on Wednesday and Friday. Is that what I heard from the rest of the board?
Yeah, I second that.
Okay. Your motion's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, let's have a vote. Those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Everybody voted aye, so the motion carries five to nothing. Thank you, folks. And let's move on. Next item.
We were going to add the Chick-fil-A.
Yeah, the public safety. Supervisor Elliot Abrams wishes to add a de minimis agenda item. He wishes to discuss the Chick-fil-A traffic problem, continuous traffic problem.
Just, just for the record, as a de minimis item, the board cannot take any official action. They can discuss. And if they'd like to have staff do some things, they can direct staff to make inquiries, but could not take action tonight without an additional vote to add a full item to the agenda, so.
Okay. With that understanding, go ahead, Elliot. You have the floor.
I just noticed that an awful lot of the time, lunchtime and dinnertime and even at non-football times, there is a backup that comes out onto Atherton Street. And to me, it's a traffic hazard and, and it's been recognized. And one of these days, there's going to be a bad accident, I'm afraid, and I, I just don't want that to happen. And I've heard certain things such as that Chick-fil-A is interested in opening another window there. I, I get stuff there too. I love it. And the times that I've gone, I've noticed that when I get to the cashier's window, it often takes too long. And if, if that's happening to me on a few, few times, maybe it's happening to other people. But I don't know, I don't know how to run their business. They do and they're doing very well and, and we encourage that. I also wonder whether some of these funds from the American Recovery Act, whether we can purchase part of Cornflower Lane and open that up. There, there has to be something that, that we can do, but I think that we need to insist that since they have that much business and they came to us with a plan that showed us, and this, this is what they said they needed for their business, that since it's not, hasn't turned out to be right, that it shouldn't just fall on the township to fix it.
Chief Jolly, oh, Pam, go ahead.
I know one of our board members received a letter from a Mr. Hoffman, if I'm not mistaken, on the subject of Chick-fil-A and that this board wasn't taking this seriously. I would just like for the record that I did mention Chick-fil-A at our last board meeting on the eighth. And Chief Jolly gave an extensive update on what they were doing. The Chick-fil-A issue is very important to us, very, because it is dealing with traffic and life. So as we move forward and truly know, each board member on this board has taken that traffic issue very seriously. And I know Chief is about to give us an update on, on issues moving forward. But I do like the public to know and our community to know that we do hear you. We do hear you and we are working tirelessly to resolve this. Thank you.
Okay. Chief, do you have any updates that you can give us?
Yeah, so we have definitely seen an increase in the issue and the activity there at that location since the, the return of the students. To give you a little perspective, in the last approximately three weeks, our officers have stopped and issued warnings to about. our officers have stopped and issued warnings to about 30, 31 people. And again, you know, unfortunately, it's one of those things where, you know, if we're there and we're directing traffic or we're trying to mitigate traffic issues, our officers can be there for 10 or 15 minutes to get things kind of cleared out. And about 20 minutes later, you can go back and be right back in the same boat. So it's something where we almost need something there constantly, especially during the rush hours of lunch and dinner. But we see it at odd times as well. There's times at 7 o'clock at night or 8:30 at night that it's still backed up. I did reach out to the business owner to ask him if he could provide us a timetable of, or any kind of action plan that they have to move forward, like Mr. Abrams said about possibly installing an extra drive-through lane, and I'm waiting his response. So once I get that, I will make sure we forward that on to you.
Thank you, Chief Jolly. Any other comments? Anita, go ahead.
Is there a way for Chick-fil-A, and I don't know if the township can do this or private business can do it, it seems like there almost needs to be a traffic person on site for multiple hours of the day. Just as businesses order, often hire a private security guard for their business. Can the township ask Chick-fil-A to bear the cost of hiring a person? I don't know that they would have traffic ticketing responsibilities, I'm not sure of the logistics of that, but to have someone out there at the curb to deal with this problem until they are able to take other remedies.
Chief, Chief Jolly, can you answer that?
They've had folks out there in the past, we can, we'll send that message back to them again, that they probably need to go back to doing that. We can ask, that's as far as we can go.
Okay.
Chief, or Doug, maybe both of you can answer. Because of the home games that Penn State has, is there any way that we can work as a township with Penn State to find out our home games is bringing more traffic into the area as well? That may be working together, we can all come up with some solution?
Well, we've got their schedule, so I, and I think that maybe, at least for the next...
Two more weeks?
Yeah.
Of home games.
I think, yeah, I think we can spend, I think the next kickoff, what time's the next kickoff?
Noon.
Noon. So that's probably not as big as, I think the game after that then is Indiana, and that's a night game, so that may be another issue. So I think I'll ask Chief to see if we can get maybe a special detail to pay a little attention to that on Friday and Saturday of home games.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we move on with the agenda, I'm going to take the chair's prerogative to call a short recess. Five minutes recess. So I'm calling this meeting back to order after a short recess. So before we leave the public safety items on the agenda, I just want to call everyone's attention that the Patent Township and the Patent Township Police Department and the Patent Township Business Association Children's Safety Fair will occur Saturday, October the 9th, at the Colonnade, the Target Parking Lot, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. You may recall that we did not have this fair last year because of the pandemic. So we're very happy to be able to re-implement or reinstitute this safety fair. It's free admission, it's a lot of fun. I've attended in the past, and I'm sure many others have as well that are here. Next agenda item is number five, Public Works Proposed Regulation for Small Cell Facilities and the Public Rights of Way.
Yes, as I have told the board on a couple occasions in the past, working on a new ordinance to regulate these facilities, which have been enabled by Act 50, by the state legislature. Act 50 was passed at the end of July, and we have until October 29th to get regulations in place. Last meeting went over some of the, provided you a draft of the first part of the regulations, you know, what can people do, you know, what are we looking for them to do, what design guidance we provide them. Tonight, I just would call the board's attention to, starting about the middle of page 10, that I've added instructions to applicants on how to apply for a permit, noting that the Director of Public Works will be the one generally to issue the permits, but also provide that Township Manager, Deputy Township Manager, or if the Director of Public Works provides for a designee, they can also issue permits if needed. I won't go through all the issues, but have put in there a process for how people can apply. And that runs, those items all run through pages 11, 12, and 13. And then, the other thing I want to draw your attention to is in the middle of page 13, it says Roman numeral six, which needs to be renumbered to 141-6, and I will get there. Is a public notice provision, again, I have borrowed heavily from the City of Pittsburgh on these regulations. So they do have a process where they require the applicant to post signs on poles within the area that they're going to put a small cell facility. They also have to send notices to all property owners and tenants within 300 feet of the new facility, and then also send a certified letter, I think, to the property that fronts, where they will be providing information to all these people, and where they can provide comments. So that's kind of a new issue for us, that we have never done anything like that before. My recommendation is we leave it in for now. It seems like a good process to get the word out and put it on the applicants. Well, after, most will have to do is provide a template for them to fill in, so that we make sure that they get the consistent information out. But that is more or less the end of what would go into our code book. There's a couple other things that I'll need to work on and get back to you by the next meeting, and that's a fee schedule. Most of that is fixed by the state law, but I'll just need to put it into our format for our fee schedule. And then, another companion document, that's the aesthetic standards. Now, aesthetics is probably an overreach in this issue, but we'll use examples of existing poles that we have in Patent Township is, it should look like one of these. There's one we won't use, which is a wooden pole that was supposed to be temporary, and I think it's now become permanent. But all the other ones we have in Patent Township are, you know, we have one on a flag pole, we have a couple on some light poles, and we have three or four that are on traffic signal poles. So we'll put in pictures of those, and maybe borrow a few things from City of Pittsburgh again, and say, you know, it should look like these things. That's really about the extent of the aesthetics. And, but I'll put that together also, and then some application permit forms. Bring that back to you on October 13th, ask you at that point to schedule a public hearing. I would not take that back, since this doesn't, it's not a municipality's planning code item. This will be outside of zoning and subdivision. We just, we can call a public hearing if we want, but it's not a required. But we'll have to take action on October 27th to adopt the regulations. And that squeezes us right in under the October 29th deadline. That's where we're going. If you have any questions, please, I'll try to address them now, or if you, or I'll bring back answers on the next meeting if you have.
Okay. Betsy, go ahead.
So do we, so is the burden of proof, the burden of restriction on us to prevent a sort of, what might be the best term, problematic requests? Do we have to have, if we don't like something, can we say we don't like something? Do we have to have it written out, prescribed pretty clearly?
Oh, we have to have it prescribed. So the federal law and the state law really say you have to permit these things in your right of way. They've given them public utility status, in essence. So like, we have to let, you know, Columbia Gas and the power company, they all have access to our right of ways as public utilities. So these are, been put in more or less in that class. So we have to have a process where they can do it. Now, we, they can't do anything they want, there are certain limits, and we can, as long as we're working within those limits, we're fine. The things we can do to prevent problematic things is, A, we can make people co-locate on the same pole. That's one thing we can do, and we do that with large towers, too. So, you know, instead of them planting a new pole, if we have a traffic signal in the area, we can say, you can go on a traffic signal, or something like that. We can, through these aesthetic standards, we can say, you know, if you do this, you gotta use this type of pole, and you gotta put a street light on it, so we get a free street light out of it, or something like that. So those are the types of things we can do. But at the end of the day, we have to let them do something. So there's a little bit of back and forth and negotiation, and then there's, the other thing that the, the state legislation did, and the federal legislation also, is there are set review periods, 60, 90 days, depending on the type of facility, that we have to meet those. And again, it's like the municipality's planning code. If we don't provide them a review and decision in insufficient time, then they become what's called deemed approved, and those are things we don't want to do, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, Doug, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the next item is 7A, Policy Discussion About American Rescue Plan Expenditures. Go ahead, Doug.
This is me, yeah. So as we've talked about, we did do a survey and asked residents and members of our ABCs and partner agencies to all provide ideas on what they would like to see for Patent Township expenditures of these plans. Searching for a way to, how do we, how do we divvy up this money, really? Is the question I was trying to answer. So I went and I looked at the responses from the survey, and these are primarily the ABC members and the public, and whoever else, if board members did the survey, I didn't look at all the names. But anyhow, so these are the results from those, from that survey, and people were provided, they were prompted to provide at least four, up to four ideas. So I think we had 100, I think there was right around 100, there was a little more than 100 respondents who in all provided 206 ideas. I went through all those ideas, divvied them up into those categories that are shown in the agenda, and then, you know, counted those, the easy part, and then came up with the percentage. If we took those percentages and applied it to the $1.654 million we're going to get, we'd get these categories shown at the bottom of page six, you know, as what I call a target. Now, out of that entire $1.654 million, I took 5% out, and for record-keeping and reporting, and I think we're going to talk to some firm, there's a couple, there's a firm in Harrisburg that the county's been using to assist them with what they've been doing with their ARP money, and I'm going to set something up so Larry and I can talk to them and get a quote from them to help us, especially with the reporting and making sure that we're checking all the boxes. We have to check on federal funding, because we don't do a lot of direct federal funding. We do very little direct federal funding. Most of the money we get comes through the state, so we don't have to do all the reporting that normally is done on grants, but, so that 5% is held back. So if you can go to the next page, Alex. So, finally, you know, noting that it would be hard to hit that exact target for every category, and also that our survey results weren't scientific. It was those that wanted, everybody was invited to respond, and those that did respond, did. Also, I did put something in the newsletter, asking people to respond. That went out three weeks ago. We got a total of seven new responses, so I haven't included those in here, because it didn't seem, I was pretty sure it wasn't going to change in the final. But what I'd suggest that we look at, and one of my questions tonight is, you know, if we took those target numbers and then looked at a spread, and I took 40%, 200% of that target, and say, if we tried to match our expenditures to somewhere in that range for each of those categories, then that would give us a fair amount of leeway within the categories to, you know, if there's some areas that the board wants to do more on, like maybe bike paths or something like that, give us some more latitude to spend more there. In other areas, the other way, we might not be as motivated to spend those funds in some other categories, so. I put that on the table as a starting point for a discussion for the board. And then, I provided a very large data dump to the board with, and I will go back through these things a little bit more detail. That included, Dan and Anita had provided some specific questions. Betsy Whitman had also provided a couple that are listed under CIP. But so, and then we got several, several, we got 20 or so suggestions from council of governments. I went through our CIP. This is on the attachment 7A1. Alex, if you, yeah, go to page three now, yeah. I went through our capital improvement plan for this year, and pulled out the projects that I thought on my, just the first blush, would be eligible either under the, directly under the grant or as revenue reduction money. So, there's several there, there's some new ones I put in there designated as new that you're going to see as CIP projects, and when we look at that next month also. At the bottom of page three, there are a few other things that didn't, haven't quite made CIP yet, but are at top of my mind, the things that we, that we could, things we need to do and could be, could be funded through ARP monies. So, if you go back to, or go to page eight of the agenda, and I really, I poised three questions for the board. Let me just, first question, and I'm not going to ask the board to answer these right now, but is, do you agree with my, the general concept I put out with the table? That's on page seven, with the ranges. If you want to have some discussion, we can talk about moving those ranges around. I can do a little bit of that on computer and the projector, or on Zoom. Then, the second question really has to do with those projects that are listed on page two or three of the agenda, that, you know, are, they're projects out of those lists that you definitely want to see be in our American Rescue Plan program. And then, the third question I said, are there additional projects board members would like to see scoped and estimated? And that's probably, if you look through all those ideas that show up on pages four, five, through 11, where I took those, the top categories, and then divided those into subcategories, are there ideas under those things that you, at this point, you know, want to know, is this a $100,000 project, or is this a million-dollar project? We could probably get you that information, at least by the next meeting. So, with that, that's the conclusion of my agenda, and I'll turn it back to you, Dan.
Okay. This is a lot of information to digest. I'm certainly personally not in any position to discuss details, specific projects or things like that. I'm going to need time to go over all of this, but we can certainly, I think, be fruitful discuss, have a board discussion on, on, you know, overall picture, on the process, what, how do you want to proceed? And just to remind everyone, we only got half of the money this year, and we're not going to get the second half of the money until June of next year. And we have until the end of 2024 to spend all the money.
Actually, we just need to obligate it by then. We have till the end of '26 to spend it, so.
The point is, there's no, there's no big rush or hurry for us to make at this point. It's not like we have a deadline to have to decide by next month. No, this can be an ongoing process. So, if we can, instead of discussing individual items that we personally are in favor of, or whatever, I think it's more worthwhile if we talk about a process. The manager has presented a possible process that can be followed, so let's talk about that. And I think the first person who put their hand up was Elliot. Go ahead, Elliot.
First, an apology. Anita, as is often the case, realizes the fact that I hadn't realized it at all. When you look at the number of responses total, a very, very small fraction of our population actually responded to this. What does that mean? Does it mean nobody cares? Or does it mean that they want the elected officials who they elected to do this? Or is there some other thing? But it all goes to agreeing with, I mean, Doug's done a lot of work organizing this, but I don't really think that we have any clear picture of what to do. One idea is, let's see what is actually in the bills that get up, get passed at the end of this month, beginning of next month, that show the federal projects that may need local matches to proceed. And make sure that we're in a position that we can do that when those projects come up. I remember a few years ago, wasn't a few now, when the Waller Road Bridge was on, and we were advised, make sure you have a shovel-ready project, ready to go, when any money is announced. And we did that, and that bridge is there. If we hadn't done that, we might still be trying to get it. And so, I think we can be cautious, but let's see what's going to come out, come out of whatever is passed, and what we may have to have funds to help with.
Okay. Anita, go ahead.
Yes, wait a minute, let me lower my hand. Yes, thank you, Elliot. I agree with that entirely. And thank you, Doug. This has been an incredible organizing effort. I appreciate how staff put together the categories of the survey, how you tabulated them, how you've given us, as you called it, a data dump, how you've itemized all of the specific possibilities. This is a tremendous treasure trove to be looking through, and it required a lot of work to put together. Thank you. I think that's superb. Yes, the one point that I would make, because you do ask the question, and thank you for how you've put the questions before us, that you've framed decision points that we can consider. The question about, should we be supporting the concept of expending funds as indicated in the survey and within the range suggested? And I would agree with Supervisor Abrams that, as you look at the number of respondents, 206, and you mentioned you got 70 more recently, but that's only 1.3%. The 206 or 1.3% of our more than 15,000 patent township residents. So, we really haven't heard from the 98.7%. And I think what they're suggesting is interesting and should be looked at, but I don't think that it is indicative of the full range of the township needs or priorities, and that we shouldn't let 1.3% data drive the decision. So, while I appreciate you specked out what it might be if you did limitations within each category, I think that is less useful than us just looking at all the specific proposals, understanding what category they may come in, but not be limiting, if you will, or putting financial ranges based upon the percentage of the survey responders in each category, since it really was a very small response. But kudos to the township for getting a response at all, that I don't think that data is large enough to merit driving the decision parameters. And I look forward to reviewing all of the specific proposals that you've itemized, and maybe putting them in categories. I think that's very valuable, but in terms of the, having those expenditures within range limitations of money, I think that's not so useful. Thank you.
Thank you. Betsy?
Great, thanks. So, yeah, I think, yeah, as Anita, and sorry, I thought I wanted to, as Anita, Elliot, lower hand, sorry. Both said, it's not necessarily representative sample, but I also wanted to note that these are squeaky wheels. These are people who took some initiative, are on top of things, and they spoke up. Squeaky wheels are how a lot of things get done, it's how a lot of good ideas come to the surface, or, you know, get spread around. They don't always listen to the voices who need to be heard, and don't realize that. Anyway, so I consider this manna, this is a gift. We're very lucky to get it. The circumstances not so rosy, why you got it. So, my understanding is that the reason we're deciding this is there are certain uses of this money that are allowed and certain uses that are not allowed. Is that correct? But it's pretty far off.
We're going to separate this money into two pots. There's one pot that we're going to call replacement of revenue, or revenue reduction, I think it's actually called, which will probably be the major portion of the money. And that money we can use for, quote-unquote, "other governmental services." So, in essence, almost anything we do.
Okay.
And then, the rest of the money is going to be constricted to, there were five bullet points in the original bill that were really focused on COVID response. So, any of the other money beyond the revenue reduction has to go into one of those five bullet points. And that would be like the, you know, aid to businesses, aid to individuals, COVID response, pandemic support, specific response, and a few other specific things. Stormwater, anything stormwater-related is actually permitted.
Stormwater and broadband.
Pardon?
Broadband was.
Yeah, well, broadband can, is only to areas that have no service at all, so. That's why I didn't want to go there.
All right, sorry.
So, yeah, so thank you for that clarification. I, like others have said, am overwhelmed by the decisions and the, or the opportunities. I'd like to suggest that we could use this opportunity to use the ARP money to make a statement where my mind is right now, and most of the times, is with climate action, and I think a lot of the items that have been suggested are related to climate. I particularly like the one of putting the solar on a township building, which may not be that necessary right now, but it makes a statement. It will pay back itself in eight years. But it also very much makes a statement to the public that we're supporting solar energy, and more importantly, we're supporting action for climate change, or climate crisis, however you view it. Anything that, from this list, that doesn't make it into the ARP spending, will, a lot of it will make it into our budget in one way or another. But, so I think to a certain extent, it's almost arbitrary what we put into the ARP funds, although they obviously have to meet certain spending specifications. So, I just suggest it as an opportunity, and I will say, even though my thing is climate action, I will say that you actually can connect most of the things on here to a climate action. And I'll use the example of affordable housing or available housing. If you have that close in, then that reduces the amount of greenhouse gas emissions, obviously, used for people commuting to get in. So, yeah, that's just one suggestion on the process.
Okay. Any other comments?
Thank you. I just want to thank Doug and for the breakdown that you just gave me with the two pots. It kind of makes sense now. I know we're going to need a little more time to just go through all of this extensive information, but thank you for putting this together, because it's like, I guess as Betsy puts it, it's a treasured chest of information. And Doug, thank you so much for putting this together. It really is a footstool to, you know, putting our heads together as a board to move forward and to thank them for even allowing us to have some kind of funding to address some of these issues, which are major. And especially, I'm looking to get some more information on our replacement revenue. Also, with the second pot of money that's geared to the COVID, you know, as far as our businesses, how can we help our businesses? COVID is not going away, and as we go into the second realm of, the numbers are now going up again. Hopefully, we can get our businesses back on track to sustain theirselves as we move forward through the second phase of this. So, Doug, thank you very much on this.
Okay. As I said, this is a lot of information to digest. I hear, we, well, I think we all want more time to review this data, this information, so we could put it back on the agenda in October, after the board members have had a chance to review this information. Not that you need to do anything special for that, Doug. You've already provided quite a bit here. I do have a question that maybe the staff can help with, and that is, a lot of these survey suggestions were about helping local businesses. I know that the county has had a huge pot of money that they were using to help local businesses. And then, we also had the Payroll Protection Act. There were a variety of federal funds that were already put in to help businesses, and I don't want us to use money to duplicate something that's already been administered. You know, I mean, if we have businesses that were left out for whatever reason, in terms of qualifications or something, that's, yes. You know, I would be very happy to consider a proposal to assist them in some way, a proposal to assist them in some way. But the businesses that have already been assisted, I, I don't see why we should be committing funds that we could use for other purposes to, on top of that, unless there's a good argument why, well, they were still underfunded. You know, they had certain needs that only 50% of their, of their loss, losses were covered or something, and there's additional assistance they would like, fine, I need that information. So I don't know how we find that, maybe.
Well, I can talk to county and see how they're managing their program, what they're doing. I can talk to, I think the borough has been doing something along those lines. I can bring that, that sort of information back to the board.
Yeah, whatever you find out, I think would be very useful. Now, Doug also asked if any of us had any specific projects that we haven't already told them about, we would, that we would like included, or if there are additional projects that the board would like to see scoped and estimated for consideration. So, and if you have any suggestions that you haven't already made? Betsy?
I would actually like to see a cost analysis done on the solar on the township to see what the payback period on that would be normally, what the amount, right now, what the federal grants, if any, would be available for that.
There aren't any grant, well, I'm not aware of any grants currently that are available, which is part of the reason we haven't done it, so.
Yeah, for sure. Okay. Well, then, then maybe an analysis of that and maybe a decision to, if, if there's a sense that some grants are in the pipeline a few years down the road, put it off.
Well, I mean, you could use this money as a grant, as the grant, too.
That's true, but, yes.
Any other comments, suggestions? Okay, seeing none?
I just asked the board at, you know, at some point, probably going to need some sort of process where we get a lot of input and we figure out what we're going to do and.
Yes.
Provide, you know, ideas on how we sort out what money gets spent on which project.
I, I want to have a phone call with you about some ideas I have about, about that. I'm not ready to make a presentation to the board. We can discuss it at the next meeting.
That would be a good discussion point at the next meeting.
Right. Yeah, process. Okay, let's move on. Oh, Larry, did you have some, something you want to say? Go ahead.
Yeah, only that I know we talked about, we don't have a, a month deadline to decide on any of this money, but if we are going to spend this money in 2022, we do have to put it in. Correct, Doug? So, so we do have to have an idea if we're going to spend some of it, you know, for when I do the budget.
Or we just have one big line that says ARP funds, $1.6 million or something like that.
Yeah, I guess we could do that.
Eight hundred something, yeah. Well, we'll have to figure that out, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, thanks for the reminder, Larry, that, you know, you, you and Doug are, I'm sure, already working on developing our budgets for, to present to the board in October.
You get CIP in October and the budget in November.
You'll have to.
Yeah. All right, let's move on. The PSAT's resolutions provide direction for a voting delegate. Our voting delegate is still Elliot, I hope. Elliot, you're, you are going to that meeting, right? The, the PSAT's business meeting in October?
Still muted.
There.
The, the business meeting is on Saturday morning, is that right, or is it Friday morning?
Friday morning.
Friday morning, October 15.
Yeah, I was expecting to leave early in the morning, go there for that business meeting and then come back, so.
Well, it starts at 8:00 AM. You're going to drive, you're going to leave?
We used to get up at 2:30 in the morning for many, many years.
That's right, so if I leave at 5:30, I should be all right.
Okay, just, just so the board knows, I'm going to attend as well, so I can be the alternate delegate if, for some reason. Elliot Abrams' control over the weather is failing and he ends up with, with some problems getting to the meeting on time. Okay, go ahead, Doug. You have in the agenda your recommendations on two, four, five, on five of the proposed resolutions that we reject. Did you want to elaborate on any of those?
Just 21-1 has to do with required training for firefighters and relaxing some of the standards. I would say we support Resolution 21-2 instead, it's just far more specific about the training required. 21-65 has to do with development and we, normal, bonds are what we normally receive from developers, and we haven't had issues with bonds, using them for sure. 21-68 has to do with relaxing land development regulations on lands, low impact land use changes, which I find very big. So that was, I would suggest we reject that one. 21-69 relaxes DEP or Conservation District oversight for erosion and sediment control, and reject that because we're, we find that very important to have Conservation District and DEP help us on managing ENS on sites larger than one acre. And then 21-72 has to do with MS4 permitting, again with DEP and stormwater and everybody in the Commonwealth ought to be held to the same regulations, which we've been working with for the last 10 years, so those are my recommendations.
Okay, any comments or suggestions? I have a question, Doug. I, I have not been a voting delegate before, but I seem to remember some, some discussion that these resolutions are presented as a package.
No, PML does it that way.
Oh, that's PML.
Yeah, PSAT does the wonderful process of going through these one at a time.
They do go through one, okay. All right, so we don't have to worry about voting on the whole package.
Yeah.
No other comments? Thank you, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that a board member wishes to pull for separate discussion?
No, we did make some corrections to typos and one clarification to the minutes, but nothing that changed, needs amendment.
Okay. Seeing board members wanting to pull an item, so I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we accept all the items in the consent agenda.
Or approve.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Pam Robb has seconded. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
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 All voted yea, so motion carries, five to nothing. Managers report?
Just a few items to announce. Center County is still doing mosquito spraying, where they find large populations of mosquitoes if people have issues. Contact the county Office of Community Development Planning and they can arrange for that. I think they sprayed one place a couple weeks ago. PML Municipal Summit is seven to ninth, then I'll follow up with everyone by October first on get lists of who all is going and what days and stuff, so just upcoming events. Can't say too much about the Children's Fair, it's on October ninth, encourage everybody to go. And bulk waste collection is the week of 18, October 18 to 22. End of my report.
Any comments or questions from the board?
Question.
Yes, Pam, go ahead.
Doug, do we have a number to the Center County mosquito disease control? Do we have a phone number?
Not right off the top of my head, but if you call the county offices or go to their website, you can find it. Yeah, the guy who does it is actually in the planning department.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But I'm sure if you call the county directly, their main number, they say mosquitoes or say West Nile, they'll send you to the right person.
Got you. Thank you.
Notice they don't call it West Nile anymore, but that's, they still do, they still do trapping and testing. Well, the county traps and they send the mosquitoes they trap to Harrisburg and they are tested for West Nile virus. I think we might have had one case in the township this year, so pretty, that's very low from what we've had in prior years.
Great. Thank you.
One positive test, let me say it that way, not, not a case of somebody getting infected, but one, one positive test.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, committee reports. If any board member who submitted a written report wishes to elaborate on your report, speak up now. Exec Committee, COG Exec Committee met yesterday, which I attended, and I didn't write up a report, let me just say a few words verbally about some of the items on the agenda that There was quite a bit of discussion on the library director hiring process. Just to remind you, the, there was a, a procedure that was followed for hiring the replacement for Kathy Alloway. There was quite a bit of disgruntled Sklo Library Board of Trustees members about part of that process because the search committee, actually, they called it selection committee, composition was one representative from each municipality, and that was six, and two trustees members. And so they felt, first of all, that was really unfairly balanced against the Board of Trustees members, who actually have the responsibility for, you know, the board, setting board policy and all that, and so they felt their input was minimized. So there's been just some back and forth between COG and, and the library board about revising the entire policy for the next search process, which may be whatever, five years, 10 years, who knows how long it's going to be, but as a guideline that, that can be followed. And the point of contention is still the membership of the search committee. The current compromise that the exec director, COG exec director is, has come up with is that the search committee board consists of six, six voting members, actually, seven voting members. Six members would be three from, from the COG and three from the trustee, Board of Trustees. And the seventh voting member would be from, a representative from the county. The Board of Trustees came back to COG and, and the vice chair, blocking on her name right now. The board is proposing that the search committee be either three, three and two, three board members and two COG members, or four and two, four board members and two COG members. So Exec Committee had a lot of discussion about that. In the end, the Exec Committee did not change the proposal from the executive, COG executive director, that the committee consists of three and three, three board members and three COG representatives.
And one county.
So that's where it stands now. I'm not sure, this may go be in the general forum agenda, or it might be a matter of record, I'm not sure what's going to happen. Next thing. There were several agenda items that were discussed and approved as, as they were presented. The muster gap, Anita, it was at the, at that Parks Capital Committee meeting. The, there was a proposed draft letter to Penn State President Eric Barron encouraging some, some action to preserve or to implement a, a policy that preserves public access from Whitehall Road Regional Park through Penn State lands, you know, the so-called valley gap, up, up to the muster gap trail. And that, that particular draft letter is, the Exec Committee decided not to send it yet because we heard from Sharima Young, Penn State's representative, that Penn State will be giving a presentation in October about this, so Exec Committee decided, let's wait until we hear what Penn State says before we actually send them a letter. Dan?
Yeah. On the library thing, I was on the last two hiring committees, and I believe successful, I know we were successful the first person, and I assume the second person, too. The, when I was on it, there were some question about how effective the trustees had been in actually their own fund rate, fundraising. And I wasn't on a committee that was supposed to investigate that, but I heard that. And it turns out that the alternate person who was not selected then went to work for the Discovery Space as their fundraiser and has since left. So I hear the complaints, but I don't, I'm not sure I hear a solution.
I'm trying to see if there's anything else that I need to report back to you from that meeting. Now, it looks like the rest, there were, either the action was this, what was included in the agenda, or there's further discussion taking place. So that's Exec Committee. You have in your agenda the future meeting schedule. There were also some additional reports included with, in the attachments from, from the St. House Borough Water Authority, and the Solar Power Purchase Agreement Committee. Anything else, Doug? Anything else we need to know about?
No, sir.
Any board, board members, anything else? Yes, Anita, go ahead. Anita?
Yes, a little background, which the board may know about on the muster gap. The Parks Capital Committee in proposing the letter, and I think it's a wise thing that the executive committee is holding it for a while, the concern is that this access to the trail has been especially championed by the Penn State President Eric Barron. And when he leaves and a new president comes in, the concern was how strong the Penn State commitment would be to allowing access to the trail, which is on their property. So that was why Parks Capital sought to get a clear, encouragement of what's called what, a memo of understanding. And Sharima informed Parks Capital that their lawyers were already. And Sharima informed Parks Capital that their lawyers were already working on all the logistics of what that might be. So my sense was that the effort had spurred Penn State to some movement, and I'm pleased to hear they'll be making a report. But the concern was that when President Barron leaves, that the commitment of Penn State may not be as strong, and they wanted to get that nailed down. So thank you.
Thanks, Anita. Any other items?
Yeah, one more.
Pam, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you to Pam Adams. She did the Climate Action Advocatation Plan for our Public Safety Meeting, and she also did it today for the Patent Township Business Association. She did an outstanding job with two Penn State students, who Betsy was there as well. I just want to continue to thank Pam for an outstanding job as she performs, does her presentation throughout our region, so that's it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, one.
Yeah, Anita, go ahead.
A follow-up question, and I apologize for my confusion here. With Valerie Burnett and the advocacy letter on to the legislators, is that something that we're following up on informally before the next board meeting? Are we designating somebody to work with her on the letter? Or, I didn't quite understand where that was left.
Good question. I don't think there's any plan.
Yeah. Well, what's your pleasure? Because we didn't specify a specific process.
I'm out of town for the next two days, and it seems to me like the letter should be looked at ASAP. I don't mean to put Valerie in a hard spot, but my, we talked during our break, and I thanked her, I just suggested that she put down what she knows about it, and it's more than what I know about it already, and then, but we would look at it, scrutinize it, edit it, and so on.
Yes, go ahead, Valerie.
Thank you. I just wanted to get some clarification about this letter, which I do appreciate Supervisor Betsy saying, let's take action on this. I would be curious what's the point of consensus, because I did name a couple of things. One is the infrastructure bill, and the other is the reconciliation package. And then, in my mind, neither is quite enough for the things that we are facing, and in fact, we actually need something like a Green New Deal, which is a whole nother level. So in terms of, if I'm writing something for the board that people would support, my question is, what level is everybody okay with if I'm gonna be taking the time to put that together?
Doug, I'm certainly comfortable with the current legislation that is before that, and as far as the Green New Deal, I think that's more in the planning. Some people have very specific ideas about it, but I don't think that it's made much progress under that title in the legislature. So I would not include that. I think we're addressing specific action taken in the thing. At some point down the road, yeah, a letter addressing specifically a broader movement might be more appropriate. But I think right now, addressing what's on the dashboard and what's in the hopper, whatever metaphor we use. Yeah, thanks. Good question.
And everybody's good with that?
I would just say that my personal view about the board supervisors sending some kind of advocacy or supporting letter, it needs to address a policy. Now, is a specific legislative law that's being proposed or something? Yeah, then it makes sense if you say, we support that, voting yes on this legislation because it supports such and such policy that our board supports, something like that, something that's very specific. You just want to say, a statement that Patent Township Board of Trustees, Board of Supervisors supports any action that promotes, you know, reducing greenhouse gases. That doesn't really have any impact on anybody. So I think that kind of a letter is kind of pointless, but tied to something much more Any other comments to help Valerie? So Valerie's willing, it sounds like you're willing to draft something for us to look at. Thank you. All right, no other comments? Thank you, Valerie. Any other business? Seeing none, now accept a motion to adjourn?
Move, oh, the lid on the screen.
And seconded?
Seconded.
Who?
Seconded. My seconded?
Pam Robb.
Who?
Pam Robb, seconded.
Pam, okay, thank you, Pam. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, the meeting adjourned.